I want to remind you that this is a meeting that is actually, actually a public hearing. The any vote that we take is a vote of recommendation. It has no binding qualities. It is strictly a vote of recommendation. Our primary purpose is public hearing. So I do indeed thank you as the public for being here with us this evening. At this time, I'm calling the meeting to order. I would like you to rise and Lonnie, would you lead us in the invitation, please?
Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to gather together and conduct business in a way that hopefully everything is going to benefit us as people, us as citizens, and Lord, help our community. Lord, as we go forward, we ask you to bless this board, give them knowledge, wisdom of the issues at hand. And Lord, just watch out. And we also ask you, Lord, for the, for the families that's lost people, lost friends. Lord, we ask you to bless them. Lord, we ask these favors in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Lonnie. Please remain standing. I will ask Cassie to lead us in the bled of words.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please proceed. At this time, I want to take a minute to recognize Cassie Rasko. I want to welcome her. She has joined the Board of Commissioners this evening. This will be her first meeting. I also want to make a public statement of thanks to David Keller for having served on this board with us, and we wish him many good things in the future. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Aye.
Motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Kerry, thank you. I now would like us to, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 24th, 2021 meeting. Do I hear that motion?
I'll mention.
Second?
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Kerry, thank you. To remind you, people who entered a little late, please silence your cell phones. At this time, we're going to take up new business. The first item, public hearing, item one, request an annex into the city of Jasper, parcel JA-10052.001, consisting of 3.85 acres and rezoned from county highway business to C2 general commercial. This property is located at the intersection of Noah Drive and West Church Street in Jasper, Georgia. At this time, I'm going to call Lonnie Waters, our development manager, to bring this before us. I'm going to mention to you that what will take place next, if there are any interested parties representing concerning this property, either through ownership or development, they will be allowed to speak, and then any members of the public who would like to speak will have that opportunity as well. So Lonnie, Kerry, forth.
Thank you, sir. This property, as you say, is at the intersection. It's the empty lot straight across West Church Street from Community Bank. A gentleman has approached them to put a business there at that location. The owners of the property have fulfilled all obligations as far as paperwork, request for this annexations and rezoning. Staff recommendations are based on analysis of the application using the standards and criteria found in section 94-246 of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends to approve the request of the annexation into the city of Jasper and rezone the property from county highway business to C2, which is general commercial. Should mayor and city council approve the annexation request, it is expected that the following minimum standards are demonstrated and met as requested by staff during the appropriate approval process. If the current proposal does not meet the minimum standards, it is understood that the development plans will be altered to come into compliance.
Thank you.
I don't think the developer or the owner is here tonight. They were invited. They were coming, so something must have come up, or they're running late, won't they?
Okay. No developer or owner here on this property. Would somebody from the general public like to step forward and speak regarding this property? Do I hear any comments from the Board of Commissioners at this time regarding this property?
No.
Y'all all know where it is. Apparently, it's going to be developed for use as a commercial business. No comments. I would like to hear a motion to either approve or not approve this recommendation.
I'll leave to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? I have a second. Those in favor to approve this property, please signify by aye.
Aye.
So be it. Kerry, thank you. Item B, public hearing, request a rezoned parcel 030C-001 and 030B-061.001, consisting of 50.33 acres from RA to, and, I'm sorry, from RA and R1 to planned unit development. This property is located at the intersection of Highway 515 and Philadelphia Road. Lonnie?
Okay, sir. This piece of property, there's actually two pieces there. This property was petitioned for annexation two, three months ago. Since then, the city has put a moratorium on building, but this has been in process prior to the moratorium. So this applicant has the right to see this through. So that's the reason it's coming through. It hasn't been tabled. It was tabled in your meeting before. So that's the reason it's going through now.
I understand.
They tabled it due to, and the owner, our developers here, and the owners are here. They tabled it because of some restrictions and the density and relocating and a traffic study. All of this needed to be done prior to bringing it before you. That's the reason they tabled it for a couple of months, so they could get these items taken care of. So staff recommendation, based on the analysis of this application using the standards and criteria found in section 94-246 of the zoning ordinance, staff recommends approval with conditions of the request to rezone the property from RA to R1 to a planned unit development per the site plan. It is expected that the applicant will comply with the following conditions. Should mayor and council approve the rezoning request, it is expected that the following minimum standards are demonstrated and met as requested by staff during the appropriate approval process. If the current proposal does not meet the minimum standards, it is understand that the development plans will be altered to come into compliance. And the developer is here and the landowners are here.
Okay. Thank you, Lonnie. We do ask whoever would like to speak on behalf of this property, please step to the podium, and you are addressing the commission.
Yes, sir.
And this goes to the public as well. I also like to ask that you keep it to the point.
Yes, sir.
Would y'all like to take a seat? Please take a seat if you would, and I do ask those who've interlaid to sign in before you leave and silence your cell phone. Pardon me for interjecting.
Not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, appreciate your time tonight. Thank you for the public as well. I had the opportunity to meet with Chairman John prior to the meeting, and the first thing I told him was, you know, God spent a little extra time on the little town of Jasper in Davidson County when he, when he built it. And it's obvious when I arrived here, it's just stunningly beautiful. And we're cognizant of that, and we're planning to keep it that way. We're not here to do anything that wouldn't give value to your community. I mean that. I want you to try to keep an open mind tonight as we, of course, address y'all. I want you to know, we're a Christian-based company. We're not here to take advantage of anybody. We're not here to get out of Dodge in the middle of the night and they bag money and leave you with our mess. How do you do that? But having said that, I just want you to know my heart a little bit, okay? If you would, Commissioner, pull up the form that Lonnie was just kind enough to read out, so we can explain what the request is here. This is an existing 50 acres of land at the intersection of Philadelphia Road and Highway 515. Certainly, when you're talking about apartments, you know, I live in Brookhaven, Georgia. Apartments are a bad word.
I excuse you, Jim.
Yes, sir. Apartments are a bad word where I come from, you know. Typically, it leads to a lot of crime, issues. And the way we look at it, though, is what kind of apartments are you building? There's a difference. Just like there's a difference in a single-family home. A 2,000 square foot, single-family home sometimes costs 150 grand. Sometimes it costs 300 grand. And sometimes it costs 400 grand. It depends on how you make it, how you build it, what you put into it. It's the same with apartments. These apartments, two-bedroom apartments, cost us $150,000 to build. Thousand square feet, 150 bucks a square foot. That's not cheap. So we're not building economical. We're not building government subsidized. We're not building Class B, Class C apartments. We're building the very high-end Class A apartments. What is a Class A apartment? A Class A apartment is a three-story apartment building that has highly amenitized areas. In other words, fitness centers, a clubhouse, swimming pools. It's gated. It's a gated community. It's not open. Everybody can just come in. Secondly, if you want to be a resident in this community, you better have three things. You better have a job. You better have a 700 credit score, and you better have a clean criminal history, or you're not coming in. In other words, I mean, I can come up here and buy a home. I don't have to give it like a criminal history. I just give them a check, and I move in. But in this case, you better pass, you're going to pass a criminal history, or you're not coming in. We control this. If you take 270 units, and you multiply that $150,000, that's over $40 million. The people that have the most lose here, besides the community doing the right thing, of course, is us. That's a huge financial commitment. That's without the land. That's just the vertical part. So the question again is, Commissioners, are we bringing value to the community? Or are we detracting? I mean, it's not complicated. If we were bringing value to this community, and I can prove it to you, I wouldn't be here. So let's go to the site plan, if you will. Page three of your traffic study. It'll say two, but it's the third page back. So everybody's multifamily apartments, apartments, that's a very small component of what we're doing here. Let's read what the actual components are. There's 50 acres of land. 12 of it is going to be for the residential components. This is where I'm saying, are we bringing value to the community? What are we actually doing here? Let's read what we're, the first one is, yes, apartments. The second one is we're proposing a 90-unit hotel. This is 515. There's 20,000 cars a day to drive by here. That's an appropriate use for that type of product. We're talking to grocery stores, grocery anchor. Great site for a grocery anchor. Hard traffic light, 20,000 cars a day. Let's keep going. Retail space, 4,250 square feet of retail space. I personally think the city needs these things. It's your decision, but, you know, this is how you upgrade communities. Who's going to live in these apartments? Let's discuss that for a second. I see it being policemen, firemen, teachers, people that serve this community. They serve this community, and they have a right to live in the community they serve. And I'll assure you, most of these people that are moving into this project, they can afford to buy a $250,000 home. They just don't want to. They got the money. They got the credit score. They got the job. They're not coming into our community. This is a choice. And a lot of landlords, as we well know, they just don't want a home. You see this all the time. People don't necessarily want to own. They want to rent a nice facility. Let's keep going. Restaurants. We think there's a need for restaurants here. I go up to L.J., they got a ton of restaurants up there. A ton. But the problem, the biggest problem they have up there? No place for people to live to work in the restaurants. It's a real challenge. It's, it's a crisis. Give them more time. It's not just like, wow, we need your help. We got school teachers calling us, saying, crying, saying, please build something up here. I have a job. I have nowhere to live. That's a true story. Let's go to the next one. Fast food restaurants. We're talking to God's Chicken. If you guys know who that is, they're not open on Sundays. I can't guarantee it, but we have a very good relationship with that family who would love to bring them here. Let's keep going. Office space. You asked earlier, Commissioner, what was going on? 100,000 square feet office. Is that something you'd like to see here? Let's keep going. Climate-controlled storage. And be cognizant, the old storage buildings of, you know, the wraparounds with the, that's not what they do now. These are three- or four-story buildings, architecturally very pleasing. These are good fits for this community. Let's talk about, I don't know, what do you, what do we pay for property taxes now, Janet?
It's under agricultural, so it's about $480.
$180. We're projecting, this would bring $500,000 in property taxes in City Jasper. That's just property taxes. That's not sorghet bees. That's not water. This is how cities grow, but let's make sure we're growing smartly, wisely. I would not propose this in downtown Jasper. It's not appropriate. Costs too much traffic. We're in 515, a bit of traffic light. If you're going to do something like this, number one, make sure it's quality. Make sure you feel we're a great developer whose heart is right. And make sure that the components we're bringing to the table are appropriate. We're fine with the conditions that Lonnie's given us. We have no problem with that. But I want to look everybody in the eye here, be very, very clear. I don't need money that badly that I'm going to come in here to do something and leave you with my mess. Here's my goal. Here's my motivation, is to do something so nice, exceed expectations, so that someday, somebody on this board, as a parent, who decides they want to sell the property, let's call John, he gave me a set he was going to pay. That's my goal. That's how I operate. And let me tell you, God bless that. With God's blessing, there's nothing you can't do. I thank you for listening to me. I'll take your questions.
Any questions at this time?
Yes. The, you mentioned Class A, that this is a Class A apartment complex. Can you describe what that actually means?
That's a good question. What that means is, it's gated. Number one, it's a gated community. It's not like anybody can just come in. Number two, it's construction, it's the construction cost. There's, it's hard to pin it down, but it's fitness center, it's the amenities, it's gated, and it's basically regulated to the construction cost. I asked the city council, I asked Mayor Art if he would be kind and put the city council in a bus, and we'll bring them down to, you know, Gwinnett County and show them what we've already got, so they can see it, touch it, feel it. And he just didn't think with the COVID that that was probably the right time to do that. But certainly, that's something we applaud and we encourage. It's, that's when you know, that like, wow, this is really cool.
How many other apartment complexes have you developed?
Well, we've got about five of them in the Atlanta area. It's a, you know, there's, it's interesting. A lot of apartment developers won't come this far north because their money comes from New York or Chicago or wherever, right? This is a family-owned business. It's our own money. The equity comes from us. We know Jasper. We know that it's a wonderful community to do this and will be successful. But the majority of folks inside 285, they have, they're not going to come out this far north because it doesn't beat their business model. We understand that there's people here who need this type of housing. Remember, 700 credit score. I'm not sure I can get it. But criminal background check. That's that points, Gary, you're out. He's my architect. And got to have a job. Got to prove it. And we check all that stuff.
And the projects that you've developed, you still manage those projects?
We do. We manage them. It's a family-owned business. We, that's a great question. We do not third-party that out. And we're in it for the long haul. There's a big difference too between, you know, some of these companies, as soon as they hit about 80%, 90% occupancy, they're gone. Family-owned business. No, sir.
What about water and sewer?
Water and sewer are supplied by the city, and we have agreed with Lonnie and city council that we will stagger the units so that as the sewer comes online, we're bringing them. It's kind of marrying that up, if you will, so that we're not overburdening the
What are your target, what are your target rental rates for the units?
11, $1,200 for a two-bedroom, 8, $900 for a one-bedroom. And we shy away from the three-bedrooms. And the communities kind of ask us that. I don't know why, but three-bedrooms, you know, those are people with children. So we usually do about 5% threes, 60% twos, and the rest ones. And if the city wants to say, Johnny, we'd rather have this, this, or this, have that, we'd be glad to accommodate it. I will tell you guys, with these particular components, let's do them again, hotel. I think everybody's like apartments, apartments, apartments. Of this 50 acres, 12 acres is being used for apartments. 26 acres of the land, Commissioner, is being zoned and approved, or hopefully approved tonight for commercial. So that 50 acres, 50% is commercial. What's 12% of 50, Jerry? 25%? 25% for the residential component, and the rest is community space.
What kind of rental rate are you going to have on the commercial side?
That's a good question. Yeah, that's a very good question. As much as we can get, to be honest with you. I don't know that right now. But we do know there's a drastic need for retail in the city of Jasper because for some reason, it leapt, Jasper, it leapt over to L.J. It's all up there, but it's not here. I don't know why that is, but it tells me there's a need. Or there wouldn't have been one there. You guys are posed for a lot of growth here. I mean, this hospital wasn't built down here just for the heck of it. There's people coming. The key is, let's be very smart about it. Let's make sure it's bringing value to the community. And do with it a developer who gives it. And I'm going to tell you, we do, we honest, this is a great community. You know, I'm going to leave you with this note. There's two ways people make money in the building. Of course, when I was a kid, I grew up, and I lived in Florida, and there was these people that would come down there, take advantage of retired citizens, and take their money and just leave them with a bag. And I went up past my dad and said, what are they doing? He says, Johnny, they're just leaving corrupt people. And then, as I got into doing development, I realized, look, you can make more money doing things the right way than you can the wrong way. Build a good reputation. God will bless you. You'll make money. Why do you have to do it the other way? Didn't make any sense to me. And you know what? I was right. Because I would tell you, there's people in this room, right here tonight, within the next two years, you call Johnny, my mom and dad died, they'd like to say, oh, like, that's how you make money. I thank you.
Were there any other questions by the way?
I do have one. This property is sandwiched up against a lot of agricultural and existing residential. What are your plans to be at least invasive to them?
We want, they want us to build a fence. We're glad to do that. We've reached out to the Lutheran church. They are for us. They're very kind. They're helping us with access point. Anybody in this room, of course, who happens to join the property, would love to listen to their concerns, and we'll document it. We want to be good. That's a great question, by the way.
Lonnie, traffic. How are we, how is everybody going to have to enter this development?
They have added in the plans, they will have four entrances and exits, where three will be on Philanthrop Road, from 515 moving west.
Okay.
And one will be on the north end of the two properties, coming out on Appalachian Circle, and there will be an entrance exit there. So they're meeting the requirements for city ordinances as far as exits and entrances. And the DOT will have some requirements as far as a decelerating, and, you know, at different places. They'll have to deal with the DOT, and we will follow up and see that it's carried out the way the DOT wants
Any other questions?
I want to ask you, Chairman. We did, on the point of access, on Appalachian Way, we are purchasing four acres of land that basically has no valuable use for, the topo's too rough. We just bought it, it's near the Lutheran church, so we can have another access over there, so it wouldn't put too much burden on Philadelphia. It wasn't cheap either. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for public comment, one at a time. If you would come forward to the podium, state your name, stay on point, and let's hear what you have to say.
My name is Jim Ducar. My family moved up here in December, up in diligence, 53, from Gwinnett County. As we all know, Gwinnett County is loaded with apartments. We had parks in there, Little, downtown Sloney, subdivision around it, couple-pound houses, regular houses. Now they put hundreds of apartments by it. Three years ago, a little old lady could walk out in the park, a walk in the park, there's a park in the center of town, no problems. Can't you do it now? I doubt it. What we hear is, we always hear about developers being good neighbors. Really? Are they ever good neighbors? They're always one out for the final bucks. You know, if he thought this was such a great place to live, buy a house here. Do you think all these houses are going to be affordable? Is the county, is the county going to get their tax money when they start putting, if they have kids in school, 270 apartments? Let's say 100 kids, 120 kids. You got the other party, you got the other housing development. Are they going to put, you know, is the schools going to be able to handle this? No. So what are we going to do? You know, it seems to me that all you guys are doing is annexing everything, give them water, give them sewer. So all you're going to do is turn all the stuff over to them. This is going to be just like Gwinnett County in another 20 years. So what are you going to do about it? Nothing. You know, don't let the stuff be annexed. Keep it out so they have to provide sewers, or not sewers, septic tanks. So when there's So when there's a septic tank, you can't build the big apartments. I have no problems with small apartment complexes, twenty-five places or so like that. You know, they're saying that they're gonna have all these work, all these people coming in, teachers and everything else. Really? It's not, you know, eleven hundred bucks, twelve hundred bucks a month? They're gonna go buy a house. They're not gonna sit in an apartment for any long time if you have a commitment to a community. No one does that. You know, if you're older and you wanna sell your house, that's one thing. But everyone I know wants a, the American dream is to buy a house, not to have, sit in an apartment that depreciates. Watch the news in Atlanta, where's all the crime? Apartments? And apart, the best day in an apartment is the day it is opened. It goes downhill after that. Apartment complexes are sold all the time. They get new management, new people in there, and keep going down and down and down. What are you gonna do? You know, two-hundred-and-fifty apartments, go up four-hundred, take a ride up four-hundred. See all these big apartment complexes? I have no problem with small apartments, you know, small, one or two-story apartments. But don't put big monstrosities in the center of the place. You think you're gonna draw, you think you're gonna draw all this business? Saw the news this morning, downtown Atlanta is empty. There is, nobody is working in offices anymore. How much office space do you need? You've got a ton of empty buildings around here. What are you gonna do? You know, you guys are the, you guys are the city of Jasper, I'm in the county, and my problem is, you're annexing everything and giving everybody the sewers, so they can develop anything they want, excuse me, just gonna be just like Gwinnett County. That's all I got to say.
I appreciate your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have another member of the public who'd like to step forward? Once again, I ask you to state your name and address the commission, please.
All right, my name's Eric Serret. I moved here about three years ago, and I moved here because of the size of the city. I moved here because I didn't wanna be in Canton, I didn't wanna be in Atlanta anymore. I wanted a quiet, small town, that's what this place is. So it seems like there's some type of narrative that everybody wants this to be Canton, everybody wants this to be a bigger city, and growth is natural, people multiply, the place is gonna get bigger, houses are gonna get built. But what concerns me and everybody else that I know that is in this community, that I've spoken to at least, is the rate of growth. And when you drive in and you see these, you know, ant farm housing communities that are, you know, right next to each other, it just takes the character out of the city, and it seems like, like the city are just allowing people to build everywhere. And I live off of Lumber Company, which is, you know, I take Philadelphia Road to work every day. So now, one of the most beautiful roads in the, in the city, where you have those cow pastures and that thin, tiny little road, you're gonna have two-hundred-and-seventy townhomes built on that, and then people are upset about it, more torn goes in the place, because, you know, everybody's like, what are y'all doing? And now all of a sudden, there's the same thing, right next to it, a few hundred feet away, you're gonna have apartment buildings. And, I mean, he's talking about all these people that are gonna be coming in here, like, I'm with him, like, nobody wants to stay in apartments all the time, especially if they're moving out to the country. If you're talking about people that are moving here for that, they're gonna wanna get homes. So I question the price point and the necessity for that level of apartment here. And it's just, it seems like too much, too soon, and the rate of growth, the city's not, I was out of water for six weeks when we had that flood a while back. We had problems, everybody on my road, we had problems with the water pressure. And it took pretty much two months to get it right. So it seems like there's problems with the infrastructure now. I don't know the details of it, I just know that, you know, we've had a bridge out for, since March, somebody just died on, you know, because they didn't fix it. And now you're gonna have all these people, it just seems like it's, it's all for greed. It's all for people to develop with no foresight as to what the city's gonna look like in ten to fifteen to twenty years. So people like this community because it's small, because it's, it's tiny. They don't want a Kohl's and all these, a Sam's Club and all that stuff. If you want that, you go to Canton. You live, if I wanted that, I would've been in Atlanta, so. I like this town because it's small. So it needs to grow, but it just seems like they're plopping, just the thought of a two-hundred-and-seventy apartment complex right next to a townhome on that, on Philadelphia Road, just makes me sick. But, I don't know, I love it here, I just don't wanna see this place get ruined, I don't wanna see it turn into the next Canton, I don't wanna see the traffic go insane, which it is, you've got, two-hundred-and-seventy townhomes is gonna be, I mean, if you've got two or three people living in, you've got the husband with a car, the wife under the car, and they got a kid in high school, that's three cars, so you got more than a thousand cars on both sides merging into that one little area that you're plopping in there within a few years. You know, it's just too, it just seems like too much, too much, too soon. Like I said, people, if you wanna come up here and buy a house, it's different, but I just think greed is starting to take over a little bit, and next thing you know, we're gonna look like Canton. So, that's pretty much the last thing.
Thank you for your comments. Do I have anybody else? Would anybody else? Your name?
My name is Kristy Bone, and I actually live on the property that's right behind where this is going. It's very nice to see some friendly faces up here. So I still have some questions about it, I certainly am not against growth for Jasper or for the school system, which is all that we did, running the business of taking care of people in Jasper. We moved to that property in 2014, we're very good friends with the people that sold it to us. But very concerned, I mean, when we talk about re-intrances on Philadelphia, there's not a lot of space between 515 and my driveway, so, three? It's already, I leave for school in the morning at seven-thirty, just all the traffic coming off of the hill of Hobson Road takes me a long time to get out of my driveway. And I'm very nice, I don't use it as a four-way, so I wait, because we're on private, so that takes a long time for us just to leave. We have three most wonderful springs on the property that actually is the property that they're selling, but it turns into a creek that is what my horses drink of, and I'm worried about that. How, how close is the building going to get to those natural springs? Are we gonna follow all those restrictions so that that water stays clear on my horses? I worry about unsupervised access to my horses, I don't know how close to my property is that home to be, those are my pets, I, you know, I love them, I take care of them, we put blankets on them in the winter, people laugh at us because we do that, so, you know, and when I say my family, my entire family lives on that property. I have three children, my brother lives on that property, my parents, who are divorced, live on that property, because we told them, if you guys got along well, you could get along for the rest of your life, so we can take care of you. My grandfather lives under the apartment in my dad's house, so this is, this is honestly my life, this is my life, so I'm not against growth, but I am against huge growth, and I'm not super comfortable with two-hundred-and-seventy families living in my backyard when, I don't know them, I didn't choose, I clearly have chosen to live with the people that I love, and that's really, really close. So I would just ask that you consider, if this is the growth that we want, you know, we, this, you know, is it, is it, are you going to protect those of us that have lived here and taking care of Jasper for, you know, since nineteen ninety-eight?
Thank you for your comment.
And thank you for your good question.
Would somebody else like to speak?
First of all, I want to say thank you for allowing me this opportunity.
Absolutely, stick to that.
My name's Jerry Franklin Daniels.
Thank you.
And, you know, my wife and I, and I really don't have much prepared, but my wife and I moved here in 2006. And we, we found Jasper, we found Pickens County on the internet, while we lived on Greek Island. Retired out of the Navy, I figured I could find somewhere to bring my family up here. And the only thing that was here again was the Woodbridge Inn. And my first person I ever met at ten o'clock on a cold winter night was Joe Rutherford, Mr. Rutherford. And I don't regret moving here, I love living here. I think that we live today, I think that we live in some very uncertain times. And when I say that, I'm talking about the political climate that our country is in today. There are no guarantees, sir, none. And I hear what you're saying, that there's no guarantees. There's no guarantees what this development will be in five years. There's no guarantees whatsoever, what the federal government cannot deem this complex as what they want to use it for. There is no guarantees, there's none. I've lived in apartments, I've lived in house trailers, I've lived in some of the worst places you can possibly imagine around the neighborhood on the East Coast. And I've dealt with, I've dealt with the crime, I've dealt with prostitution, I've dealt with the drugs and everything that comes with it. And I've watched apartment complexes start out here, and I've watched them fifteen years later going, you don't wanna go down there. You don't wanna go down there. I would stay on point by saying I absolutely disagree with this, and I ask and plead to you guys to deny this request for rezoning. It's bad timing. Maybe in three years from now, but it's bad timing, real bad timing. And I don't think Pickens County needs a Chick-fil-A that bad anyway. I'm not saying I don't trust you, I'm just saying that a developer, they cannot make these guarantees, they cannot make these guarantees. And I ask my neighbors in Pickens County to take that into consideration. That's all I got, sir.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Gere.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Linda Lully, we live on Longwood Huthen Road, and we have a daughter who's a teacher. She teaches in Cherokee County, but she can't afford to live there. Her boyfriend, future husband, is a Pickens County Sheriff's deputy. He can't afford to live in Cherokee County either, but they can afford to live on a home, and they've been on the waiting list for Laurel and Preser since April, and they finally got a contract this week for their first home in Pickens County, where they wanna live. They don't wanna live in an apartment, they don't wanna throw their money away. They wanna have a house, they wanna live the dream that their parents lived, they wanna raise a family in a home, in the backyard, have a dog that can run around. So when this committee looks at zoning, why are you not looking at more senior family homes for people who wanna have that dream and live in this community where they can raise a family? And that's what I'd like you guys to consider.
Thank you. Would anybody else from the general public like to speak at this time?
Excuse me. Thank y'all for letting me speak today. My name's Jim Moore, I live on Longwood Huthen Road. I've lived in Pickens County all my life, with my parents, my grandparents, and their parents and grandparents, watched a lot of changes here lately. Been a big, big, big change. And I hear them talk about, you know, how nice it is up here, it's beautiful up here, but we made it beautiful, we did. We don't wanna see all this change. You know, you talk about gated communities, well, you can keep crime in gates, I mean, it's in Atlanta all the time, and I'm with this guy that stepped up second time and spoke, you know? We really don't want that here, I don't see why we have to have that here. We wanna keep crime down, and, you know, all the infrastructure and all that, we all know, we know that's not gonna work. And we talk about money and talk about how we like it up here, and to me, you know, money, people say, money changes people. Money don't change people, money makes them more of what they are. And it's not about the money, it's about the greed for the money. And if it's all about the money, then our place is really gonna change. And I, personally, I don't wanna see that, I don't think a lot of y'all people sitting in here do. I mean, I've lived here all my life, I'm fifty-six years old, and I've been here for a long time, and I'm seeing a lot of changes that we can stop. We can put a halt on this. I mean, you're saying now, on this side of the interstate, you're wanting to do what you're doing now, well, y'all just vote it in, something else on the other side of the interstate. And I don't know if a lot of people realize this, but behind Arbor Hills, if you're familiar with Arbor Hills, that land, all the way down from Arbor Hills, all the way down to R and R Storage, from the railroad tracks to the highway.
I ask you to address us.
It is gonna be full of houses, as is the rest of this, I don't see how we can handle all that. We can't even get out of Lumber Company now and get on the interstate, it's just terrible. But everybody comes, I've run a painting business up here for twenty-something years, and a lot of people that I met have moved in here, and they come, oh, we love it here, we love it here, glad to have you here, but please leave your politics and all your big buildings where you left, where you come from, and don't change our county and our city. So, you know, I'm not a speaker, I don't know nothing, I just showed up here just to see what went on. And I felt like I needed to get up here and speak, you know, our voices need to be heard. I'm just really appalled, I see property for sale on Big Ridge Road as a dead-end road that runs to a creek, and they're trying to rezon that. And I don't know if it's county or city or how it works, but as I grew up, when you seen rezoning, it was a big metal sign, four foot by four foot on metal posts, and as you rezoned this on the other side of the interstate, out Philadelphia Road, two little yellow signs stuck up in the cuzzoo, two days was thrown over, everybody thought it was yard sale sign, nobody knew nothing. And then I see another little bitty sign over there, and I stop, and what is it? From here to the wall, you can't even read it. And I'm like, why aren't they posting this for people that live here, that built this place, can see that we're trying to change this? Is that, is that by law, is that the right-sized sign?
It had to meet the necessary requirements, so, yeah.
Yeah, it is?
Yeah.
Well, that was one of my questions, but like I said, you know, I'm nothing, I'm nobody, just somebody that's lived here.
We're all somebody.
Well, you know, and it seems to me that it's turning to the money, the money. The money can't buy you what we have now. The money's gonna take all that away from us. Thank you for your time.
Absolutely, thank you for this. Would anybody else like to speak?
Everybody get up and speak, let's go.
I don't wanna make a softball game.
My name is Lynn Sandlin, I moved to Pickens County in nineteen ninety-eight, my ex-husband's family, they're probably Pickens somewhere back in the Black Linnies, that's how long back to here. We moved here from Cobb County for the very reason it's the most wonderful place I could ever imagine to raise my children. And sitting in my living room this morning, I'm thinking of all the things I need to tell you tonight, the traffic, the schools, the water, the, you know, we have the firemen to even, you know, address a fire at something that big. And the strangest thing happened on the news, the news lady said, I was fifteen years old before I ever saw stars. I was raised in the city, first time I went Canton, I was fifteen, and the first time I saw stars. And that's a very small reason, but to me, that's one of the biggest reasons to keep our little town the way it is. I know it's gonna grow, but I do not see all those apartments right there. When I lived off of Camp Dobbs Road, they built that little Dogwood subdivision there, and I thought, oh, that's gonna be terrible. They were nice houses, very nice houses, I never saw a lot from there, I can still see the stars. Moved to Hobson Road, I can still see the stars. I'm just asking y'all to please let me still see the stars.
Would anybody else like to speak?
I'm gonna come up.
Sure.
So, I'm the other side. Yeah, I'm, anyway, I'm Janet Mueller, and I represent the land that's being sold, my mother passed away in January, and that land has been our family, as a matter of fact, all four corners there was in my family originally, when it was the Johnson property. And, you know, we are not trying to change Jasper, I love Jasper the way it is, and we've got some alternate plans even, if this doesn't work, these guys are willing to listen to do something a little different, make it a little different to fit the environment, but we're wanting, I know personally that I'm always seeing where people are like, we don't have a place to go, we don't have a place to live, and there is a need for living quarters here, and they do need to be really nice, they don't need to be, you know, degraded and just where anybody can come into them, but, anyway, so, long story short, is I think this could be a great development for us, it would bring a huge tax basis. I know as a property owner myself, that I can't keep trying to support the property taxes for things where we're, you know, for all this new infrastructure we need repairs on, and we're also getting a lot of misinformation, because I know that in, on Facebook, there's this long threads of people saying things that weren't necessarily true at all about what's being proposed. So I'm just asking people to kind of keep an open mind about it, understand that we're not trying to change this environment, we're part of it, we've been here all... We've been here all, I've been here my entire life. And I think that people do need nice places to go. Right now, there is a void of that, I think, in this area. And we don't want to bring in a riffraff, but there's a lot of people that would like to come back to Jasper maybe that moved out. And now that they can work remotely, they would be in an apartment or whatever. And I know our goal as potential retirees would be to potentially rent instead of own just because there's so much upkeep and things like that. So, you know, just have an open mind about it because I think it's something that could be a very positive thing, bring a lot of taxes through our community. And, you know, maybe with those taxes, we can build more infrastructure. And I know there is a timeline, right, that y'all presented, and that we are not wanting, if correctly from wrong, but we're not going to be on sewage with any kind of housing for two years, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So that would be the first time we'd request it, minimum of three years out. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak? Any comments from the Board of Commissioners at this time? Forgive me, every time I turn my left, I must look like I'm going crazy up here. Any comments from the Board of Commissioners?
I apologize to get here a little late. Did you describe where actual function here as this board is?
I did, I did.
Okay.
And I do remind y'all, this is a public hearing. A non-binding vote may or may not be taken, but it is non-binding. We strictly make recommendations is all. So at this time, if there is no further discussion, pardon me, if there is no further discussion, do I hear a motion to either...
To.
Oh, did somebody say something?
Oh, God.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to either approve or disapprove this recommendation?
I disapprove.
Is that a motion in the form of a motion?
Well, that's just my opinion.
Okay. I want to take that as a motion. And in that case, do I hear, and we have a second. Those in favor of disapproving this recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So be it. We disapprove this recommendation. I do appreciate y'all's time. I'm going to tell you, those who are involved with this, we have more items ahead of us. You are welcome to stay. You are welcome to leave because I know everybody's time is valuable. So, once again, I thank you for being with us for this public hearing. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item C. Public hearing, request to annex into the city of Jasper. Request to annex into the city of Jasper, carso 029B061. I ask you to be quiet. Consisting of 17.28 acres and rezoned from county RR to R2 residential. This property is located off of Net Drive in Jasper, Georgia. Lonnie?
Yes, sir. This property is off of Net Drive down, and it encompasses around Grandview Nursing Home. A gentleman came in, and we explained about the moratorium, that no residential buildings or annexations and rezonings being where the buildings will be put up before March 1st. So, if the moratorium lasts that length long, or if it's extended. So he, everyone has a right to request annexation. And so the gentleman proceeded, gave us all the paperwork we needed, met all requirements for the planning, zoning, and building department as far as the paperwork. So staff recommendations is, based on the analysis of this application using the standards and criteria found in section 94-246 of the zoning ordinance, staff recommends approval with conditions of the request to annex and rezon the property from county RR to R2 single family attached homes. It is expected that the applicant will comply with the following conditions. Should Mayor City Council approve the annexation rezoning request, it is expected that the following minimum standards are demonstrated and met as requested by staff during the appropriate approval process. If the current proposal does not meet these minimum standards, it is understood that the development plans will be altered to come into compliance. The gentleman, and I think one of the landlords, is here to discuss this. If you have any questions. We have had a conversation with the developer. He understands no building. This is an annexation rezoning process.
I want you to reemphasize that about the moratorium and the situation we are under.
The moratorium is on order now till March 1st, and that is for any annexation rezoning for residential building and allowing, permitting the building. So this gentleman is asking for the annexation and rezoning with no building at this time, correct?
That's correct.
Then he will build at some point later, and he can explain all that. But he has been made aware of that before we ever took the application.
So Lonnie, this is zoning from the county into the city, annexing into the city, but it's rural residential in the county, but they want to go R2? Why not just R1?
Well, he, R2 will allow the attached...
So they want to do attached instead of regular or single family?
Yes. This is, the project, and he can explain it to you, like duplexes or something like that. They will be attached in small groups like the duplex.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Good evening.
Thank you for being with us.
Just for reference. Thank you for having me. My name's John Lloyd. Company's Lloyd Development Services. And we're here this evening to speak about this tract on Net Drive. Before I go into details about the project itself, if I can, just touch on the moratorium and the sewer situation. Mr. Waters has been very transparent about where you guys stand with capacity in this annexation process. We understand the development cycle in and of itself is a pretty long process. So we'll make sure that as we're looking at our timing and scheduling, we're tying into availability of plan access and things like that. Unfortunately, you know, to get to the point where we're ready to build, we have a lot of infrastructure that would have to happen prior to. So we'll look at that much closer as we start getting into engineering and look at, you know, timing on the civil development portion of the project. So having said that, our request of rezoning, again, is to R2. Hood Park is a neighborhood that's adjacent to us, and I know that there's been a lot of conversation tonight about your market and what the needs are of the city. Fortunately for this project, it's a little bit different in that that market's been somewhat defined by our adjacent neighbor. It's owned R2 currently. Development started on in 2003, and I think it's steadily worked through the building cycle. Our plan was to come up with some lots that were similar in size and area dimensionally that would be similar. Unfortunately, the way the R2 code is written now, which has changed, I believe, over the years, it's a little bit different. So we proposed a product, it's a paired home, so there's two homes attached together, no more than two, but it'll be two homes attached together on similar sized lots to what our adjacent neighbor. As mentioned, we have in one and two different areas close to us. We are also contiguous to some AG land and some lower density, in which case we planned around some buffers and have actually, we've pulled the lots away from that so that there's a little bit of a, a little bit of a buffer between us and some of the neighbors that are lower density. The overall density of the project is three units to the acre, which under the, you know, under the R2 code, I believe is a medium density code that's pretty low on the medium density side of overall project densities. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I don't know that there's anything else I can add that Mr. Waters hasn't had currently.
The only issue we are involved with is annexation here. We're not talking about any sort of construction or anything. That will have to be revisited in the future. So we are strictly talking annexation here, and of course, changing from rural residence to R2. So I'm just throwing that out so that you show us great plan here. But as of right now, our concern is bringing it into the city, not any further step than that. So...
If this is needed by the council, there will be stipulations, just like on any of these others.
Sure.
And everybody has been made aware of the stipulation.
Sure. I know that we're just talking about annexation, and you brought up the fact that you want to build these attached homes. What would the asking price, the sale price of these units be? They're going to start in the high 2s, and they'll range up from there. With the cost of current construction, based on what we have to spend per foot, you know, something like what you said earlier, and so that's where we're going to land. Sure.
So Hood Park is, they're not attached, though?
That's right.
Right? And so what is the, I mean, benefit? You just want to get more units? Is that why you want to do the attached?
If by doing the attached, it allows us to stick to similar width lots to Hood Park. Like I mentioned before, there was obviously something different when that code was in place earlier. So Hood Park has basically 45-foot lots in general, 5,500 or 600 square foot lots. That's the exact same thing we have. Few differences. We're using it, I guess, under the attached product so that we can have less road width, which allows us to require, requires less infrastructure. There's a lot of benefits to that from a development standpoint. Less infrastructure means less roads, less impervious. We can make our ponds, you know, more effective because we're introducing less impervious to the home.
In answer to your question, under the present ordinances, since February 1, lots are measured in square footage, and the house or homes or apartments or whatever is based on square footage that will fit on that lot. And by doing this, he's proposing 49 units. It's always buttoned on there, 49 units, when he's allowed to build them.
Forty-nine units, so a duplex would be two of those, right? Okay, so...
Yeah.
So 25 or whatever.
And according to the drawing for the proposed project, the new ordinance says, when you reach 40 units or more, you have to have two exits and entrances. And he has met both of those on the project. So he's done 49. He had to have two entrances at 40. And so this is, this is an extra question, is based on square footage of the lots and square footage of the homes.
What's the average square footage for each unit in the duplex?
They do vary, but each dwelling unit, right, so we're talking about two of them, each one would be 1,400 to 1,800 generally. They can range up from there depending on, you know, if they add on some additional specs. But usually it's three bedrooms, two baths, is the general rule with a nice living room and a garage. Also, everything we do is HOA exempt. Sometimes it's not near as big of a deal, but obviously when you're talking about paired units, it's important.
I was going to say, because sometimes if you have a duplex and it's time to repair the roof, you know, it's, I mean, one person will do it on one side, but it gets kind of, yeah, a little bit. I mean, we don't have that many of them here, but it does come up sometimes.
Right. So it'll be HOA exempt.
Okay.
The neighborhood is...
Like a corporate HOA?
That's right. Well, to be clear, it will be HOA that will be owned by the homeowners themselves. So not a, there's a couple of different ways you can set that up. It'll be owned by the homeowners as a whole.
Yeah. We do have some HOAs, and they're not as, sometimes they're maintained, sometimes they're not around here. So, I mean, it's different. And then sometimes they hire a management company. So it's just...
Right. Usually, we'll have a management company that manages it as we're building it. I can't think of a neighborhood that we've developed that has been taken back by the homeowners. It's usually managed by a management company, like you're saying. So, and there's a lot of management companies that can, you know, can handle it. It's really not that expensive because they do so much.
In the exteriors, are they going to be, do you know, I mean, like...
As far as who maintains it?
Hardy plank, I mean...
They'll be mixed materials, yes. So it'll be some stone, hardy, shag, things of that nature, similar to the elevations that we have here. Set those up, yeah.
Any other questions or comments by the Board of Commissioners?
Lonnie, I have a question for you. What's the timeline on getting that approved, thanks?
Okay, the package is actually going out for bid like in the next week or so. Hopefully. I talked with the engineers, I talked with FEMA, I talked with all parties involved. The problem with the delay in the road was engineering it because this is the second time that has happened in like 30 or 40 years. So we hired an engineer group to engineer it so that hopefully that problem will never happen again. It's going to be a concrete-type structure. It's going to have wings to control flood damage and debris coming down. It's going to be a well-built structure. We were on a conference call today with engineers, FEMA, different people, and all of that was clarified today through the engineers. And they did indicate that very soon the project will be going out for bid. That will take a process of about 30 to 45 days to get it bid out. And then we will have, hopefully before the first of the year, we will be moving forward with some kind of construction. I'm not putting that date on the calendar because you never know with materials, the way they are in order, we can't say. But the city has worked very hard with these engineer groups to get this corrected as fast as possible, but do it to try to prevent it from ever happening again.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Thank you so much for presenting that to us. I'd now like to open the floor to the general public. Anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Everybody looks happy out there. I'm going to tell you this much, Lonnie, since all those people left, I honestly believe we could kill a hog in here and not have to worry about his fall.
I mean, it's...
It's because of the sun went down. I'm telling you.
I wonder where you go with that. I might shake it.
Me too.
I'm telling you.
We're in a park at night.
First you blind me, then you freeze.
Right here.
All right.
It's been corrected, sir.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove this action of item... of item C. Do I hear a motion, one way or the other?
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carrie, thank you very much for being with us this evening. Item D, public hearing, variance request on existing lots that are currently zoned R3. Located off of West Sellers and Mineral Springs Road. Lonnie?
Okay, sir. If, everyone is familiar, if you go down South Main, go to the four-way stop and turn right, these are the apartments or housing development. They're on the left of West Sellers. The gentleman, they're here tonight also, and what they're wanting to do is there's been issues with the HOA. Some of these have been sold, some of them have not. And they're wanting to make these apartments fee simple. So they have approached the city and they've just asked him for a variance so that they can correct all the HOA. And if they choose to do so, sell these properties, correct?
Right.
So staff recommendation is based on the analysis of this application using the standards and criteria found in section 94-210 of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the request for a variance on the current existing lots. If Mayor and Council should approve this request, they grant a variance for each lot, then the survey could essentially finalize the plat and the owners could move forward in recording. And they're here to make a statement to you if you have any questions.
Thank you, Lonnie. Would you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Barber, I've been here at that work with the investors at all these properties and our attorneys here also has been with us since day one. Basically, they're townhomes. And when we bought the property a couple of years ago, during the diligence, the conditions with the HOA being hooked to underbuildings that we didn't own and also with the plat where they didn't have the plat, one condo didn't have a lot and the other one actually had old lots. So we're basically trying to correct existing issues that we kind of, we bought it. And that's what the recommendation is, is we have to have a little smaller variance on the lot line. It's going to work. So we're not changing the use, just trying to fix it.
How's work? Just cleaning it up is what it is.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
This, I mean, this, a little bit for my identification. How many of these, those units are apartments rentals?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, so...
It's been a hundred percent since day one.
Yeah, and, okay. And so are they, are they individually owned by individual people?
They're not. They're, there's multiple owners, but they own buildings.
Okay. Own the, own the cash buildings?
Yep, and then we also have one on the two-story building where they all, each on individual units.
Oh, wow.
So it's a, it's a, yeah.
So you're wanting, are you wanting to sell the units within the building?
Correct. Like, for example, the two-story building, they already have sold these units individually for our investors. So they rent those out. So we want to be able to in the future turn these into hopefully owner occupied scenarios. And if you're a hundred percent investor right now, you can't get a loan on it. And they have a PUD scenario.
Right.
So we're trying to solve that. Correct. So we know that some aren't going to sell because they're great properties, but we're giving people the opportunity that have bought to be able to sell and get owner occupied people in there in the future, which would also raise the value of them, increase our tax base.
And this is brought on behalf of the, all of the owners for these buildings?
Correct.
Okay. And everyone's in agreement with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Evidently, when these were done, they were not done, like, you know, if you look at Jake's point, you can sell them, be simple. The guy that did these did not do them. I don't know, but that's what the issue is.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? We appreciate your time with this. Did you want to speak as well or are you happy with life back there?
I'm always happy with life back here. I'm just a resource. If somebody had a question about the mechanics of it, I'm turning the nuts and bolts to try to change the legal context of the property from condominium to feasible, as my job is.
Do I hear a motion? I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Anybody else have anything to say? There's nobody else from the general public. Mary, you and Larry do not get to talk. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove this recommendation. Do I hear such motion? Have a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Carrie?
Thank you, Adam. Thank you. You guys have a great night?
Anything else to be said by anybody? We're going to pick up a collection for curtains in that window I'm taking in right now. I'm really blinded myself.
You just got your clothes and curtains maybe? No, it's his blankets, yeah. Some Snuggies.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I hear such motion?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, aye or better say aye.